Measurable goals. And here's an example through history that I think everyone is really familiar with. John F. Kennedy, 1961, gets up in front of the country, his inaugural address says, maybe it wasn't, I don't think it was an inaugural address, and the speech says that we should take on the goal to put a man on the moon and return him safely to Earth by the end of the decade. That was the goal. It was very clear. This is what we're going to do. This is the timeframe in which we're going to do it. And that's really the component. And we're going to know when we get there because it's very clear to measure how we've gotten there. I think that's very different than if he had got up and said, "We're going to have a really good space program." Or, "We're going to have a space program. We're going to do all, we're going to have all these strategies in our space program." And so I want to be very careful that we don't create a strategic plan that says, "Here's a lot of strategies we have that we think will do, that we think will get us to being the best, but we haven't defined what that is and we're not going to be able to measure it and know when we've gotten there." And that's just what I, I just think that's missing. And I think you kind of said it was, but that was coming next. I think we just need to move it forward. And I think the board has to have some involvement in setting those. I don't think that's a, well, the staff just comes to us and says, "Here's what it is and here's the measurement." Now, there, you all should be involved too. This is a group effort. But I, to me, it's really important that if I'm, if we're going to set the strategic direction, it has to be specific, it has to be measurable, it has to be known, we have to know when we got there.
I want to interject something because I think the question that came up that I left from leaving the parents' meeting is there's goals that we know we're striving towards that are already set because they're state-induced. I think the question that's pending out there is how do we define an excellent school system? Because we already know that the graduation rate is a goal. Our job as educators is to get people that high school diploma so they can transition to wherever the road takes them. So that graduation rate is there, is a goal.
It's there.
And the state has set it. The attendance rate is a goal. It's there. The AMOs that Jason referred to, those are goals. They're already there. So I think the true, the true question is, is how do we separate ourselves from not only these goals that are already well-defined, that we know that we're at a level of beyond, beyond proficient, advanced proficient, if you look at the whole system? What are the goals that we want to set that would strive us towards excellence? And so I think that that, I want to reframe the question because we already know that teachers, and now that you just talked about goal number two, there are variables in place that make, that you can't put a number on, hey, these new teachers are going to perform at this level. Because there are variables out there that, hey, who's getting into the teaching business and what other other system is doing to attract these, the dwindling numbers of teachers. And so if your pool gets more limited, that's a variable out there that, hey, stay fluid with this. Even though we want to hire the best, we have to take that into consideration. But it goes back to the question of, hey, the real question is, is how do you define, what are our goals of excellence that are beyond the state AMOs and what we already have in place? And that would be-
I think it's a very waste. Because it's a focus issue, right? I mean, we have a goal, when we put kids on a bus, making sure every one of those kids gets to school safely, right? That's, that's a goal. We got to do that. Should that be in our strategic plan? I don't think so. I think that's just the, what you do when you operate a school district. I think the strategic plan is, what are those goals that say, this is, you know, we have the overarching goal of being the best in Tennessee, so what are the measurements? And I think that's exactly what you said, of how do we drive to get there? And maybe the AMOs are a small part of it, maybe it's a large part of it. I, I don't know because I think we need to understand the AMOs and what, what goals are being set. I don't think it's enough to just say, "We're just going to follow whatever the state of Tennessee Department of Education says," because I think we have higher aspirations than that. And I think that's another way of saying what you just said, that there are going to be goals that go beyond what's just in the AMOs. I, I agree with that.
But I don't, I don't see there being, I, I understand it in every area except for the academic numbers. That's, that's what I'm struggling with is the rigor that are built into the AMOs, and like I said, it's non-static. If you tell me every year I have to grow my ACT-
That's hard to do.
That's a goal!
I talked to a retired teacher from Riverdale who taught kindergarten for over 30 years, and I was talking to her about, "What is the importance to you on having the highest ACT?" She couldn't have cared less. She taught kindergarten for 30 years. You know, her, her goal is to have a child in her classroom, to nurture that child, to read to that child, to teach the child as best she could that that child could go to first grade. Those were her goals. ACT was nowhere in her goals. So how do we, how do we recruit teachers to teach kindergarten when we're saying, "We want our best scores on ACTs?" And then, and then another thing I see, when I had my business, I had salespeople, and I would give them a quota, which was a goal. I'd give them a quota. If that salesperson really did well, I wouldn't, I would make sure that quota was met that year. I would make sure that that person could really get that quota. If that person really didn't do well, I'd make sure that quota was really high. I wanted that person to, to really work to make sure they could get that quota. And if they didn't, they knew what the consequences were. Same thing with the kid. You've got a goal. If they can't get that goal, they know what the consequences are.
When you set those quotas for your salespeople, was it a specific number?
Yes, sir.
So when we set the goals for the school district, should it be a specific number?
Yes, it is. And it's right here in your book.
AMO. Okay.
And that, and that will be a challenge because like I said, it's not-
When we look at the other five goal, four goals, should there be a specific number associated with that? And when we look at the maximize student potential outside of academics, should there be a specific goal with that?
I think the problem is, like, the difference between a goal and a strategy. Are we going to have a document with 70 goals?
No.
Where we're going to have our, well, that's what it's looking at right now. I mean, Mason, can you go to, that's what I'm saying. If we just go to goal number two, which is recruit and develop and retain exemplary staff, each one of these bullets is going to have metrics associated with it in, in the work you plan. Are those goals?
I had three goals in that section with metrics.
And I beg you not to do that, Mark, because then we'll argue about whether or not those are the right goals. My question is, should, should there be a metric, should there be a target associated with this goal and a way to measure our performance to that target? And if it's more than one, it's more than one. If it's three, it's three. I agree with you completely. It can't be 12 or 15 for, you know, it can't be 75 in the document because when you try and focus on 75 different things, you're not focusing on anything. So the, the whole point behind the strategic plan is to focus our attention on those things we have collectively decided are the most important. And if we as a group decided that, you know what, we're not going to measure anything on community engagement. That's, it's important to us, but it's not one that we're going to put a measurement on. But we've got these other six or seven metrics. State Department of Education boiled it down to three. Now, is that a comprehensive list? Probably not. But when, when Commissioner McQueen stands up and talks about her strategic plan, she says, "We are going to raise the average ACT score from 19.1 to 20.1 in the next four years. We're going to move the state of Tennessee to the top half of NAEP by 2019, and we are going to have over half of our graduates earning a certificate by 2020." Now, will we do any of those things? I'd say, I'd hate to go to Vegas and get the odds that any of those things will happen. So the, the, the goal that you put in the strategic plan is not intended to be one that you're certain you're going to hit. It's intended to be aspirational. If everything falls right, we're going to hit that number. But it's something to strive for. And in Commissioner McQueen's case, she's out talking about this around the state because she wants Tennesseans to get excited about what's going on in education in Tennessee. I think we have a little bit of that in Germantown, where as we adopt this strategic plan, we ought to present it to the Rotary Club and the Kiwanis and all the civic groups. We ought to present it to the mayor and board of Alden. Say, "Here's our strategic plan," and have it be something that they can get excited about. Something that, that, the whole community can get excited about. And that, "We're going to put a man on the moon. We're going to add a point to our ACT scores." And, and let's stick with man on the moon because I don't want to argue about whether or not ACT is the right goal. That's how you describe a strategic plan. "We're going to do this by then." And if it's not measurable, it's not meaningful. It just doesn't, it means we're going to try hard. Our strategic plan for the next five years is that we're going to try hard. And we're going to do good stuff in the, in the process of trying hard. We're going to try hard to build effective PLCs. And we're going to try hard to monitor student data and tailor instructional opportunities. But if you don't have measurable goals in there, I think what you're saying is, our plan is to try hard.
But that's, but they are there. But I'm going to say, I'm going to meet or exceed the state AMOs. We're going to link you to a document, and that's what you have right here, that has every single subgroup. It has every grade level, it has every subject. These are serious goals.
So without arguing about AMO as an, as an appropriate goal, what about the other four planning categories? None of them merit their own goals?
No, I, I agree with you. I think we should-
I'm going to digress. I'm going to add to Jason's deal, and I'm thinking on my feet here not to be argumentative, but if our AMOs are off, and if that's my fundamental data point, or data points, if our AMOs are off, right away, I'm looking at the teachers. And so it bleeds at all lines, well, golly, our teacher performance must be off. Are we not hiring the right teachers? Are we not doing strong enough to our professional development? Are we not providing them a compensation package that allows them to stay around? So I think that is a fundamental piece that all educators that have been in the business depend, fall back on. Well, then you'd have to say, well, let's go a step further. Let's say our attendance rate is, is off. And why would our attendance rate be off? Well, our attendance rate may be off because it's not a healthy environment to go to school. Our classes are overcrowded, there's, there's leaks in the ceiling, there's food that no one's buying, there's no, so it all kind of blends. You can make the argument that, hey, if this AMO is off, what is it that the data is telling us and where are the variances? Why is one school performing better than another school? What's going on with that PD? What's that principal doing with the culture and climate? So I think that Jason is hitting that, that AMO is really, and maybe Mark's right, hey, we need to learn more about AMOs and how much power that is to, to, to set this trend. Because in my mind, I'm always, as a principal or as a leader or as a teacher, you're constantly trying to figure out in a sense, why did my kids do poorly on this assessment, but Jason's kids did well on this assessment? Which goes into PLC, which ties into that retention and development. So it all kind of blends in. Sorry, I can't think of the other goals.
Community engagement, 21st century classroom.
Okay, so community engagement would be-
Effective board operations.
Well, yeah, thanks, Ken. If you get into community engagement, my, my line in line is, hey, if your AMOs are low, well, have our parents been educated well enough to be involved with the child's life, with report card status, how to have them bed, good practices at home, whatever you have. But the piece that really has my attention, and I'm going to digress just for a minute, is at the end game, when this kid leaves us, is that kid a better citizen and does that kid meet our mission? This is the counselor in me. I am really, really worried that if we continue to put these pressures on kids, and it's so driven, and Mark, I appreciate you saying this, and it's so, and Natalie, you two, both in agreement, if it's so driven by academics and academics and academics, the research is going to show you, when they get to college, they don't have an identity core of what it's like to fail. And when they get that, where do they reach out to? If you look at the University of Michigan and their studies, binge drinking is a problem because they don't have that core development of, hey, golly, we put so much pressure on these kids that they never realize that the learning was in this trouble. Or the learning was through something that was non-academic. The learning was the fine arts. The learning was finding your niche and your success in something that's not so academically driven. And I, and I'm glad that you guys are not, that everyone is in agreement with that. But where does that fit into the strategic plan? That would fit into maximizing student potential. And all that has to be aligned. That culture and climate has to be comfortable enough for this kid to feel like they are a welcoming participant in a, in a learning, and it all goes back to the teacher. To hear me digress, which is goal number two. So those two and the AMOs, you're constantly looking at AMOs to see what that teacher's providing, and it kind of bleeds together to make a, a robust school system.
Can we just talk a little bit briefly about AMO? So the only thing about AMO is, it doesn't appear anywhere in the strategic plan that we were sent a week ago. There's no mention of AMOs anywhere in the plan. So I, I guess I appreciate now that this is somehow part of the plan even though it's really not in the plan. So I, I mean, so that's number one. Number two, I'm just reading what you provided, and it talks about what the purpose of Tennessee, the background of Tennessee's accountability model is basically, it was signed into law in 2001, mandated that no child left behind, mandated that the state, I'm on page, I'm on question one. Manded that the state district and school make adequately early progress towards the goal of 100% of students being proficient in math and reading by 2014. Okay, so that talks, that says to me that what it's focused on is making sure everyone's proficient. Well, I think today we've got 75% of our students that are proficient levels. So for those students who aren't proficient, AMOs would be a really good goal for, for those students. But I don't think we can forget about the 70, the other 75%.
But you're wrong.
It's, it's right here, Jason.
No, no. And I know what an AMO is. An AMO looks at each individual student's growth, and the teacher has to move them. That is what value-added is. That is part of the AMO.
You're not talking about a TV. There are two parts of Tennessee's district accountability model as outlined in the ESA Flexibility Waiver, achievement and gap closure. What's the difference?
There's achievement-
The achievement side of the district accountability model is based on the achievement of all students through annual measurable objectives, as explained, and the gap closure's based on this. It's talking about proficient versus non-proficient. So if it's more than that, I think we need to understand it. But I don't, I guess what I'm, what I'm at a loss of is saying, is, is we're focused on AMOs and it's not part of the strategic planning document in the loose set.
Well, because when you look at most school boards, they're, you're trying to recreate AMOs. You're trying to add in these measures that you're making yourself an arbitrary ACT score, an arbitrary math score, an arbitrary science score that has no validity based on student performance, cohort numbers. You're just picking a number. Well, I want to be the best.
Yeah, I want to be the best.
But what does that mean? If I have a Down syndrome child, the best for that child may be drastically different than what is the best for your child. That's my problem.
Please don't mean it like that. I don't appreciate it.
That's my problem.
I think that, Mark, it goes back to the question that we both agree upon. What does excellent look like? And what are, how do we, we already know that this school system, based on inherited, what we've inherited, what we have here, is a wonderful school system. So I think what you're trying to figure out, and I'm going to speak for you, but I think what I'm hearing people saying is, how do we accelerate beyond what the state's providing us? But what Jason's saying is, the state's already pushing the bar higher because it won't let us rest. It's not going to let us rest. It's going to continue to say, hey, you, you hit there, you hit this, this benchmark. We expect this benchmark in later years.
So, but I would like to, okay, so what do you want?
Well, I think we should talk about that.
Well, I'm good. What do you want to add? What do you want to put in? But I can't tell you what, I couldn't, I couldn't pick an ACT number. I couldn't pick an ACT number for you. I know that they are going to raise our ACT performance average every single year, and we're developing a plan to do that, to target students, to look at their subgroup areas, to see which areas we can provide intervention for, to provide remediation for those students.
I'm not for putting in an ACT number. I'm not for putting in any numbers. I'm happy with the AMOs as it is.
That are going to be put in.
Yes, yes. You know, I was very happy to read this and then read it again and read them in the, in the mandam and, and see the, see the things that are set in place after, and listen to Jason and say, "We're going to come back and we're going to have these, you know, these things, and we're going to set goals." You know, it, it confuses me to the fact that, here it is, it's in a finished product, almost finished product, they're going to come back and do some more. And Dan has asked us twice to give us his feedback. And now, now we're wanting to just obliterate it. And it just, it, it confuses me why we want to do this.
Can, can I address that, Lisa?
Yes, yes, you can.
Because I think that's important. So I've been asking for the better part of a year to have this discussion. And I went back and looked at all of the times that I had expressed a desire for the board to be involved, as a board, to talk about the strategic process. We got together in November of 2014 and had that first session, which I thought was really good. In March of 2015, at a board work session in which Dan gave us an update, I expressed concern that the board needed to be involved in that process. In July of 2015, July 29th, at a board retreat we had, we talked about the strategic planning process. At that time, I expressed a concern that this process not move forward to a point where the board not be given an opportunity to be involved in the process. And was assured we would have plenty of, of, of ability to be involved in the process.
And we had an update-
In September 23rd of 2000, I can keep going. September 23rd, 2015, there was an update provided at a Riverdale meeting in which we talked about the strategic planning process. At that time, I expressed a willingness and a desire to say, "The board needs to be involved to have involvement as a board in the strategic planning process." Was told we would have that session. Dan sent around a, a strategic, an update on the plan by email on September 28th, in which he said, "Here's the current version of the plan." I responded to that in email, says, "It looks great. I have some feedback. I think we should, as a board, get together and meet." Was told by Dan that Mr. Manuel would, would provide whether or not he should get together with me. We never had any meeting at that time. The list goes on. September 21st, we were at a work session where we talked about strategic plan. We never again expressed desire for us to talk about strategic plan. November 14th, 2015, at the TSBA conversation, I had a, had a conversation with Mr. Manuel in which I said, "I'm concerned that we're going to get to the end and it's going to be said, wait a second, we've got a finished product now. We can't make changes to that." Again, in November 30th, we had an update on the strategic plan in which I said, "We need to have a session to talk about the strategic plan."
You had an email from Mr. Headout on November 24th asking you for updates and suggestions.
I don't have an email from Mr. Headout at that time.
I do.
Well, then maybe he's sending you emails that he's not sending to me.
It came to all of us, and I can send it to you.
I've, I've offered to sit down with Mr. Headout on a number of occasions, but that's really not the point. We, as a board, act together, right? So we had one meeting as a board to talk the strategic plan in November of 2014. This is now the next time we're getting together as a board.
He sent you another one on December the 4th, asking you for suggestions and-
No, we didn't.
Yes, he did.
No, we didn't.
And without resolving that dispute?
I'll send them to you right now.
Good, send them to me because I didn't receive any of those emails.
Okay.
This is the email that I sent to all of you on August 28th, and it was going back through, was the update that Dan sent out. And the email that I sent everybody said, "The small group work that all of us has done is probably an excellent start for this step. We still need to have the entire board to, quote, 'go through a process of brainstorming and selecting goals,' quote, to be included in the long-range plan." Those quotes are from the TSBA outline for, "Here's a good way to do a planning process." So the idea that, that I've waited until tonight to express my concerns that the plan should include goals is, is not accurate. This has been a concern for me from, for, for many, many months. And I remember, Mark, cautioning that we not get to this point and say, "This is done. Now, board, let's have your input." And I appreciate, Lisa, the, the meetings that everyone had, or that all of you had with Dan individually. That's not a board meeting. You're a citizen at that point. That's not board input. That's a citizen's input.
But I do want to say, we're not finished, though, Ken.
I agree with you. So I don't think that's, I think that's the whole movement. It doesn't matter.
We've got the forms in the back so that we, as board members, y'all can go ahead. Let's put in, let's talk about what we're going to change. Let's talk about those things that we want to add to the plan.
Yeah, but let's not point fingers and go, "This is not a completed document. We're here together. Let's, let's discuss. Let's go to goal one. Maximize student potential. You feel that the AMOs are not going to serve us."
I can track, sorry to interrupt you. I can redirect it by saying a couple things. I think everyone, and you can say, "No, Dan, you're wrong." I think everyone would agree with the spirit of the document, that this is a good document. It's holistic, it's authentic, it's got input from a lot of people. Number two, though, is, is this is a hard discussion to say, "Hey, let's discuss this." If you want to take this form that's in that packet and say, "Hey, that's, what's the, you know, what's the rush?" is one of my questions. So if you want to take this form in the same way I presented it to the, the parents, and I sent it out to them probably a week in advance, "Hey, this is going to, this is going to save us time. Have this filled out and let's go through," actually, I take that back. I sent the, the strategic plan out to them already in advance with some guiding questions. And then I came in and said, "Here's the form, and let's go through this as a group. If you have any questions first on what the sections mean," I don't think anyone has any questions on what these, what the document means. I think what the question is, is what, where Linda was going, is, "Hey, what changes would you like to see?" And the only change that I'm hearing, being a reflective listener, is, "Hey, is this really goal-driven? And how do we define the best? And does the best and does, do the goals need to be in the strategic plan?" And that's where there's tension. Because we're saying, "Hey, the goals are in everything else that we're doing that you're not even aware of through the AMOs, through the accreditation process, through the principal's performance contract." And we know that from being in it. You guys don't know that. So if you say, "Hey, the AMOs were never in here," we acquiesce, saying, "Hey, this is a good way to redirect the AMOs," because it does make sense. They're already there. But if you're saying, "Hey, Dan, we want to add this to it." Whatever this is, that form in the packet gives you that directional guide. Now, you, if you want to do it now, Linda, I apologize, if you want to do it now and say, "Hey, let's go while we're all here, well, let's have at it." And, and, but I'm stepping back because it's really your discussion. I'll be glad to help you.
I think, I think that's a good suggestion. I would add one more thing to that because I think, you know, one of the things that is, that I think we have to be conscious of is, we're a board that acts as a body. So for us to provide you with our thoughts individually, I think there's been some of that. Sounds like a fair amount from some, maybe not as much from others. But I think we need to get back together and, and discuss that.
Oh, I agree. I don't think there should be some just given to Dan.
Yeah. I'm wondering if, you know, one of the, one of the goals, and I think it's an admirable goal in, in, in the board section, talks about having an annual retreat. So we've not had an annual retreat in 2016. I don't know that we have one planned. So should we get together and do that exercise and sit down in a room together in an annual retreat? I think you're right that this document in spirit is pretty, I don't think there's a huge disagreement in a lot of what's in it. I think this is a big one in terms of whether you have specific measurable objectives or not. I'd sure love to see if we can't get together and actually, as a board, find consensus on the strategic plan because at the end of the day, we, we should all be united in a strategic plan. And so let's have a retreat then to sit down and go through this. And I think by the end of that process, we'll probably get to the point where we, we get to a document that we all, you know, join hands and go, "Yeah, this is really, really great."
The only, the only question I'd have to ask you, and maybe when you sit down, I don't want to rehash that if I missed it in this conversation, is there a difference between a strategic plan and a working plan? plan and a working plan? And so if there is, well, this is the strategic plan, now let's develop the working plan. And if we're, if we define ourselves as an emergent district, just know as you emerge, you're going to have these type of conflictual conversations. But at the end, after all the chaos, and you step back from the chaos, and you look at the chaos, and you step back from the chaos, eventually, here's the strategic plan. And then I think the question is, is, hey, let's develop a working plan. Because the AMOs are the AMOs, and when that goes in there, I think that that really solidifies a real holistic piece of what, of what we're doing as educators. But the working plan, if you had a working plan, and, hey, we really see as a board that this is what's going to set us apart, here's what we recommend to the working plan. I think that that would be a possible angle that you may want to explore, but you may not.
Okay, so I think, you know, we're here now to talk about it, so, you know, let's kind of talk about it. I want to, something that Dan alluded to towards the beginning was a change in the mission statement. So the mission statement that we have here on page-
Was a parent-driven-
Okay, what was the previous?
It's a Twenty First Century.
It's on your, your, your document, in front of you, the, the reflective document. You look at that.
I think, I think it was.
It's on that work, the work, the feedback sheet. If you look at that mission, it's different than the one-
Hang on.
Yeah, so right here.
Twenty First Century Lifelong Learners.
To prepare and inspire our students to become Twenty First Century Lifelong Learners.
Okay. I think they just took out the Twenty First Century.
And that was an error on my part, not knowing that you could lock into the mission, but it also lets you know, hey, this is offensive.
Yeah, they just took out Twenty First Century.
Okay. So I mean, I, I just, I was looking at it and trying to figure out what the change was. So, I mean, is, if, if that's something we're all comfortable with, and that's something that we don't have to change? I mean, I don't know.
I'm, I'm fine with the old one. I don't, I don't, I don't think it's a big deal, and the new one, I mean, Twenty-
I think since it came from a parent, a group, we should leave it. Came from an outside source. This is a working document from all of us, from all stakeholders.
Okay.
I think the reason we put Twenty First Century in was to acknowledge that not only did, you know, it kind of tied to the idea that we're trying to be forward-thinking and looking. I'm not hugely sold to it. I think this is okay, if that's the rule.
I think, and don't put me on their feedback, I think their feedback is, hey, it's a given that it's Twenty First Century, and you're going to see it in the document.
Yeah, right, because we nod to it in, in one of the goals.
It's in the, it's in the, and I think that that was their feedback, though.
The other thing that I wanted, I guess, to get some feedback on was on page nine, where it talks about GMSD school board goals, and it talks about how the board articulated the following goals. And, and there they are, and I don't know, but then, on the, I guess it's the last paragraph, or something, it's on that second column. It talks about committee groupings that provided invaluable feedback, and there's a list there. I, I don't know how we feel about putting board members there, because, you know, we, you know, at different points, you know, went to meetings, and we were the ear of the board. We listened to those discussions, so that when we now meet here as a group, I can say, yeah, we talked about that at Houston High School. You know, I was your ear there. I was listening on behalf of all of you, and, you know, or, or yes, we talked about that at Farmington, the Farmington teachers, you know, plugged that in. So I think that would, that's something that I would like to see, because, you know, we were, not only did we set the goals, but we were also a part of those committee groupings. So that would, that was just something else that we can certainly bounce around, but I, I mean, I know that, you know, Lisa was the community part, and so she was our ear